I'm made of the states of America and to the republic through which stands one issue under God indivisible for liberty and justice for all.
It just got a special warning in December third fourteen.
Oh, yeah. So I think we're in, we're in a, we're in a different month.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Any comments, questions on the agenda? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. What was so?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from the February fifth meeting.
Second. Any questions on that? Hearing none? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. The elementary or?
You know, if you'd like.
I just worked up something, something to you.
Yeah, we do. We've been busy, so. I can sign happy birthday. That's my specialty. Oh, so we have talked a lot about um social emotional learning and PBIS and today I wanted to just show you how it comes together um to support data as well in academics. So you can go ahead to the next. Yep, thanks. So um just a couple snapshots of some exciting things that happened in February. We had our global day of play. Um so supporting that imaginative learning. Um we had on the hundredth day of school, we combined, it was um alongside Valentine's Day, so the day before. So we hid one hundred little blue devils around the school. And when they found them, they had to come back and they filled out a heart uh to describe what they love about the school. Um so it was really um interactive bulletin board and it was great to see how uh the kids and staff were able to communicate what they love about Genesee Elementary. And then we have right now um Mr. Grimsley, he brought the kids' heart challenge for uh the American Heart Association. He has brought that to us. Um if anybody's interested in participating in the jump the snake competition that happens this Friday, they're looking for volunteers, adult volunteers for our wrap-up assembly. Yeah, it's a big sixteen foot one. So but it, that's been a wonderful um addition. So uh throughout the month of January leading into February, uh we really focused on data and bringing the kids awareness um to the data. So they're engaged in um reading and writing, diagnostic assessments, and having them actually recognize that that number means something. And so if there was growth within the class, which all classes saw that growth, they were able to share that um on our little grit um snow hill. And so every little uh snowball addition represented one percent of growth um for the class. So you can see that there's a lot of growth there that was communicated and that aligned to the teachers um creating and tracking uh goals that they have been working on this year. So they come back around every six weeks, they look at their, their growth, um they look at what the student performance is, and then they make an adjustment to their SMART goal um to uh continue moving the students forward. Do one more, I think. Well, thanks. There should be one more. I can speak to the next slide. It's really just um even uh we have a small, we're starting small before we get bigger, um um MTSS committee, so multiple tiered system of support. Um it's really just our mental health team where we're looking at behavior and attendance data along with SEO data from Panorama. Um our recent focus has been on attendance. So we recognize that we have twenty-three students who are at a critical level of attendance. That means um they have not, they have missed twenty percent or more of school. So uh we have, Mrs. Kay is going to uh meet with Kiwanis on Thursday, asking for donations for pizza parties. And we sent out flyers to all those families who are having um, you know, where the, the attendance is really at that, that critical level um in encouraging them to attend more frequently between now and uh the spring break. So if we see maintenance or an increase in their percentage, then they will be eligible for a pizza uh pizza night with their family. And uh we are bringing awareness to our staff as well. So um which is going to tap right into, there we go, it's going to tap right into our school-wide um challenge for March. Um it's all about presence. So it's about being positively present in school and also practicing mindful presence to support leadership, understanding and cooperation, which are our PBIS goals. That's a lot of information. So that's, that's how we're trying to again integrate everything. Uh so it's engaging for students, it is intentional with staff, and it's relevant for families.
How was, how was the input from the families in regards to setting goals and things like that? You're getting quite a bit or a percentage, small, large, medium, average percentage of input from the families in regards to set goals with staff and families?
So right now, we're at the stage where we're, we actually just had a meeting today with the primary house to set some goals that are connected to attendance. And um Mrs. Kay, our school counselor, she's meeting with the families. So for instance, if we have a family who has four students who are chronically absent, she has a meeting scheduled with them this week to see what is it that they need to try and get to school and then being able to communicate back to the families. Um so that is where we're at right now. So we're kind of just giving that hot off the press um work that we're doing. So we're, yeah, so we're looking forward to seeing how it, what impact it has um through the month.
Be interesting to see that feedback that she gets. Now, you said twenty-three?
Twenty-three are uh at that critical level.
Is it five percent of the elementary dish? So how does that, you know, is it going up?
It is. Yeah, and we have eighty-seven right now. This, again, this data was just shared with our staff today, um eighty-seven out of about four hundred that are chronically absent, so ten percent or more.
Be interesting to see the feedback that you get from, you know, the, the parents and families and how we can assist.
Yeah, it's been great. I've had um really meaningful conversations with the families too, even just calling home to have conversation and talk about what do you need? Well, how can we help you? And you know, you learn a lot about the barriers that they're facing. So our cultural differences and.
Just going on your, where you came from, is, how does that compare to where you were at? Is it comparable? Have you seen similar kind of trends taking place?
It's comparable. Yeah, so but I think bringing awareness is the first step to helping to create change. And so that's, that's, that's where we're at right now, is really just trying to put a spotlight on that because we need them here in order to grow. So.
To get more snowballs.
Yeah, all tied together. All right. And then again, that just comes back to my entry plan and how everything um that we're doing is trying to connect back to them here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carroll, I was hoping Craig was gonna come and do a student, you know, presentation. Is that, that's not gonna happen?
You were gonna do the presentation.
Since the student's not here, I thought maybe you were gonna rock and roll, talk about the, the sports team once. Well, good evening, everyone. Uh excited to kind of go through the, the last of the, the budget preparations. Uh we're gonna talk about debt service, estimated revenues. Uh before we really get in and roll up the actual budget, uh which will be on the twenty-fifth of March and then uh the last one before board approval on April twenty-second. So we'll kind of get into this and that will right away. Again, this all resorts and revolves around our strategic plan, goal one, making sure that it's high-quality student preparation for both college career and military. Want to make sure that we're supporting our students and staff's social emotional wellness. Three is obviously the transparent effective communication. And then four is where I come in and that's really kind of building a robust, really responsible financial budget that will support our academic program for students and staff. So here's our estimated revenues. There's really three big drivers. You're gonna have your tax levy, tax cap, and then you're also gonna have your foundation aid and your estimated uh revenues from your aid, okay? And we'll go through what each of those really are. Those are your three main drivers to your revenues. So tax cap, that's the threshold that we will set that cannot be exceeded, not even by one penny without a super majority. So wherever the tax cap is, we can't go over that by one cent, or else if we do, then you need a sixty percent super majority to be able to approve the tax cap. So here is kind of the tax cap forecast, and this is what this looks like. So we have this current year as well as next year, okay? So last year, the actual tax cap was four point two percent. We as Genesee went on at one point nine, okay? So the actual levy instead of twelve million, three thirty-seven, three thirty, three sixty-six, it went out at twelve million, sixty-two, okay? From this year currently at twelve million, sixty-two to next year, if we were to go out of the tax cap, which is three point eight, you have four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in new money if we go out of the tax cap. Okay, so again, last year, we were at four point two-two. This year, going next year to twenty-four, twenty-five would be at three point eight. This is the potential that we could have in new money if we go out at the tax cap. Any questions in regards to that?
Thank you for putting me to wrap up that I can actually see.
Yes, I know. Usually I have to bring it this way, so I apologize. Here is the makeup. So when you look at a tax cap and what this looks like, your makeup, your two percent really of that, that tax cap is really operational. So it's instructional, it's students, it's staff, okay? You have a huge capital project right now, which is what we're in, of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Your other one is gonna be your bus purchases, which we would like to stay on that and get on another rotation of buying buses again this year for a replacement plan. And then the only other one that's really super small is pensions. So when you look at this whole thing kind of combined, you have one point eight percent that's up top here, that's the yellow, the blue, plus the BOSI's capital. And then your two percent here is gonna be really your instructional and operational budget. And that's what's gonna compact and make up your three point eight percent.
Yeah, that, that capital project number, is that both the transportation and, you know, the, the turf or?
No, that's just purely the fifteen-five right now.
That's just the like, okay.
Correct. Yep. Any other questions?
So that, that does deal with the.
It may have the Field of Dreams and some of those things.
I'm just, there's, there was one before that, that was the transportation facility.
Yeah, and we'll get into that and I'll showcase all that as well too.
Is the transportation also as part of that?
I'll give them that. Yeah. So here's the forecast. So now we have a really kind of four to five-year projection of where we would like to be. So last year or the current year, four point two, next year at three point eight, the following year, two point nine. And then you start to see it kind of slow all the way down, one point one to one point three. In this area of twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that's where we really want to bring debt back on to our district so that we flatten this out. We don't want to keep having these knee-jerk kind of three-eight, one-nine, three-eight, one-nine. Like, we really want to make sure that we have a stable actual tax gap rate that goes out, that's somewhere right around here. That would be the goal. But this is the forecast. And again, when you bring debt back on, it will start to flatten out.
Just the first thing, you do mean relevant debt, not just debt for the sake of debt, right?
Yes, relevant debt. Yes, that's going towards improvements, that's going towards a, you know, improvements to the school or for instruction for, for, for kids. Yes. So this is kind of the uh potential tax rate, and this is really the capital exclusion. So right here, twenty-three, twenty-four, I did a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I know that's typically the norm. I will also do three hundred thousand dollars as well at the next uh board meeting and showcase this. But when you look at this, and I'm a little off, three point six-nine, I think a lot of this is from the pilots. So we were at seven hundred and eleven, seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars for pilots. Okay, that is now, this year, this year when we go out to the um, to the levy, it's six hundred and two thousand dollars. So we've lost almost a hundred and ten thousand dollars in revenue, okay? But looking at what this is, the total dollar amount, twenty-three, twenty-four was twenty-eight, twenty-four. You know, looking back at some of the documents, the, the voter approval on the fifteen point five million dollar project was gonna be about fifty dollars extra, okay? You can see that we're kind of right on par, going back to the capital exclusion of what that will look like, twenty-eight, twenty-four and one fifty. You would double that again this year in twenty-four, twenty-five. You're gonna be right around fifty to fifty-five dollars. That would increase your taxes. Questions in regards to that? Okay. So here's our foundation aid, okay? Again, this is really kind of just, that's the definition of providing a basic, robust education. So our state foundation aid, twenty-three, twenty-four, sixty-eight, six million, eight hundred. Next year, again, tentative, seven million, ten thousand with a year-to-year change of about three percent, right around two hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's currently our first run of state aid and what that looks like for next school year. Here's the expense-based aid, okay? So and, and kind of, kind of got a little wonky, but I'll show you. So expense-based aid, this is twenty-three, twenty-four. Everything that you send to BOSI's, technology, transportation, software, hardware, students with CTE, things of that nature, it's all right here. All that you get an aid back on, okay? Some is at our actual rate of seventy point four, some with technology, John, fifty-six point five. Transportation is a little bit more than that. So everything has kind of a, an expense aid that's on that that we get reimbursed the following school year. Next year, that goes up, it's a big year-to-year change, three point seven six percent. You're at four, almost four, four point five million, which is an increase of a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. So again, this is the potential revenues, okay? This is really kind of the property taxes, twenty-four, twenty-five is twelve point five million. Last year it was twelve point sixty-two. So that's the year-to-year difference. If we go out of the tax cap, that's what those property taxes, that's the revenue that we would get from the tax levy.
So that, that represents about in front of their three point eight?
Yeah, three point eight, and that year-to-year is a four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Here's the potential revenue again. So this is a, a bad pie chart. I probably should have went two D on this one, but I went three D. Um you have your BOSI's aid, your high-cost public access, high-cost private access, private access, and then your state foundation aid. Your foundation aid is gonna be the key driver here, okay? That's about seven million. We're up two hundred and ten thousand dollars next year in our state foundation aid. That's what we had talked about. Our BOSI's aid is up a hundred thousand dollars. That's this. Our high-cost public access cost, year-to-year, that's gonna be a hundred to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And then our high-cost private access is actually going down ninety-five. So we were at two oh seven, we're going down ninety-five thousand. Yeah, so the high-cost public, that's where we send students potentially to Mount Morris, Livonia Central School, um any other shared services that we might send to different schools. Okay, the private one is gonna be something again that we're doing, but it's kind of like a Crestwood, a Mary Carriola, something of that nature. And this, uh you know, working with Mr. Lehman, that's a student that has, has since graduated. So here's our potential revenue again. Transportation is going down. So one of the things that we're looking into right now, last year we had over a million dollars in transportation aid. It was like a, a million ten, a million twenty, something of that nature. But it's definitely down from um what that showcases. And what that was, is there are four contracts, state contracts that we're still looking into, we have to find numbers on. It was through C and F Transportation and we, we cannot find those actual contractual numbers that were stated approved, stated approved. And so that's what's really kind of hurting us here in terms of that. Um but then you have your building aid, this is from fiscal advisors. This is really kind of a huge driver, but that's the capital project as well. And then a few other small things. So if you look at what the total revenue was for this current school year, we were at twenty-five million, four forty-seven, three thirty-eight, okay? But that's kind of skewed, and that's why I'm showing this now. That's skewed because we utilize some fund balance, three hundred thousand of appropriated and restricted and three hundred thousand of appropriate fund balance. So your total revenue for the twenty, well, really for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, what we should be for the twenty-four, twenty-five, this should be our budget, give or take. Twenty-four million, eight hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight. Now, obviously, you can go over that and you can utilize appropriated or restricted, you know, fund balances to, to utilize that, to get it to where we need to be. But technically, that would be your budget for next school year. And uh you know, just a heads up, I don't think anyone realizes that, you know, two percent in a school district and two percent outside of a school district with inflation and everything else are two different stories. Like, it's gonna be a very challenging budget year. It really truly is. Um you know, only really going up three percent and two hundred and ten thousand dollars. You know, when you look at just pension, TRS, ERS, healthcare, all those things that are going up of massive amounts, and it's, it's, it's bigger than two percent. Um it's really gonna be a challenging budget school year. Here's our debt service. So these are all things that we currently have debt on, whether that's a bond, a ban, or just principal on some of the loans that we currently have. Um I put all this over to the right there in red. Our total debt right now is two million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight forty-two. And again, that's off of our capital project, our refinanced bonds out of twenty-one, you have a ban this year, uh and then our interest on our uh BOSI's on our buses, excuse me, the ban of the new EPC project and then the new bus garage principal and interest. I'll keep coming back to this. I think it goes back to our radios, um you know, some ass and conditional, some conditional cost to uh the, the facility, securing doors, and then our boiler. Um I think Wednesday or Thursday of this week, we're gonna have SEI onsite, uh our architects, and they're gonna actually walk our boilers with us. Um potentially, we could go look at an emergency project uh and try and get those done um with aid coming out on next school year. Uh looking at the BCS because it was not on one of our lists to really kind of look at, that's actually in our favor. Um so that is something that they're gonna come in and look at. The only thing we don't know is if we purchase one, do we need to do all three? Or do we do two? Or do we need to do all three? So they're gonna come onsite and look at us, but it is something that we could utilize as an emergency project. Right now, I think the one-time cost of getting a burner is like seventeen thousand dollars, and Aaron said it could light and by noon it could be going out and you're back to two. And uh so I, I think that's something that we really have to hop on. And right now, shipping-wise, we're, we're four to six months out. So if we can live through and get through in April and then order and then really hopefully have them here by end of summer, beginning of so, of school, October starts to get cold, have them all in, that would be ideal.
You, so the, the current boilers, but correct me if I'm wrong, sometime nineteen eighties?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven. What about the controlling system?
I think they've all been rebuilt. Well, so some of the controls of the boilers have all been rebuilt, but I know that day automation just came. That was the EPC project. Those are like brand new.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And that's where we're, we want to make sure.
Whatever we get.
Have to, have to marry with that. Kind of like the king. Day's kind of like the king.
Yeah, no, I know they are. I was curious. I want to make sure it's backward compatible.
I would, yeah, I, I would hope so.
I'm sure though.
Questions?
Can you talk about pilots? Like, that's payment in lieu of taxes, right?
That is correct, yes. So American Rock Solid is one, that's your major contributor, and that's like five hundred thousand dollars. Uh there's another one, like the U of R, that's gonna be one. There's like um uh a
Coke, I think is one.
Yeah, there's an elderly like home that, that uh, there's only four. There's only four of them. And so I think there's one more on tap to come on next year or in two years. So.
Yeah, that's the one that Connie just mentioned last year.
Yeah, so it either comes on next year's rolls or the following two years, but in about two years. But yeah, so previously, and I don't know how it was constructed, uh in twenty-two, twenty-three, you were at seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars in pilots. And uh it went down to five seventy-eight, five, five ninety-eight, and now we're at six oh two. Yeah.
Great. All the, everybody inside the building here is, is kind of contributing to their respective functions?
Yes.
Weighing in and providing input. We know it might be out there or something. How challenging will the next bunches really be after?
I think that's what we're trying to get ahead of and trying to be like vision-focused, kind of like in, in the future, and, and trying to really create a three-to-five-year plan of being like, okay, let's, let's get ahead, not just budget to budget, but let's get ahead for next year, and really trying to be like forward-thinking and forward-focused on how do we prepare for a three-to-five-year budget rather than twenty-four, twenty-five? And I, I, I think we're doing that. You know, there's obviously gonna be some massaging that we have to do, um but I, I think with what we have in there and um how that will impact the school experience, I think it's just, can we make it work? But that, that vision is there and that, that's, that's what we're looking for and that's what we're planning for.
Regardless of the difficulties developing this budget and stuff like that, it's still will address our number one goal, the requirements, the needs of the students.
Yeah, a hundred percent. We're not looking to change program or lose programming or lose instruction or anything of that nature. I still feel as though we can provide a robust, you know, academic educational setting for students to learn.
Obviously, the other goals are as important, but number one is there for a reason. So thank you.
Yeah.
Right. Under my presentation, so um one of the things that we were recently notified was our S accountability status. So this is um developed based on our test scores, um as Ms. New talked about, our attendance rates. Um and what we've been identified this year is we do, we are being identified as a targeted district. And um it's based on one subgroup, the Hispanic student subgroup is our potential, excuse me, is our targeted subgroup. How we moved into this category is last year it was identified, they were identified as a potential targeted district. And um this year, their improvement in their math and ELA scores, and then the third factor that really put them on the, the list was their attendance. And so um you know, we, we are seeing that, that significant attendance really impact us. So as I said, the focus areas are for improvement are on achievement and attendance. So we are required to develop a plan that due date of that plan is April fifteenth. The objective, we will be unpacking uh needs and establishing goals. And as also as Ms. New said, it's like we coordinated our presentations together. Implementation will involve that multi-tiered system of support. Um two areas, two other subgroups that are identified as potential targets for next year were our students with disabilities and our economically disadvantaged um subgroups. The, the piece that's keeping them off that list is that their attendance is good. So you know, when we talk about attendance, it really is a significant um factor for multiple reasons. It's our accountability, but also if they're not here, they can't find a bit from all those services. So um more to follow on that plan and in our next steps. Um later on today, we'll have, in, in the meeting, we'll have a discussion item about the social media lawsuit. And so Haran, Forenza did reach out and said that there is a mass tort lawsuit that's against all the social media um agencies, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, Snapchat and YouTube and Google. And what um this national lawsuit is saying is that social media has placed a severe burden on all school administrators in the following ways. We've had to increase our education about the dangers of social media. We've had to address mental health issues due to um social media, and there has been a significant disruption of um the learning environment due to social media. To join this lawsuit, there is no financial risk. Um I'm sure Mr. Bailey could spend a little bit of time talking about the uh influences of social media and his day-to-day responsibilities. So the reason that this lawsuit has um come about is they said that school districts have hired additional mental health staff, which we have, which we have, that we've had to develop lessons on social media harm, which we have. We've had to provide training for all of our educators and, um, on social media, we have done that. We have increased disciplinary measures, we've had to address bullying and harassment and threats. And, um, there is a significant amount of time that administrators are spending investigating and responding to threats made over social media. So wanted to give you the background information that we could then discuss later on in the discussion item, um, at that point in, in the board meeting, or we can discuss it now, it's, it's truly up to you.
Any comments, questions, no? I mean, we're either, we talked about it now or defer, but I, I guess, what's the expect? I'll ask a question. What is the intent of the litigation?
So the.
Is it to gain financial support?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, do we know?
So the lawyers that, um, have brought this suit, they would take thirty-three percent of, of the.
Whatever this judgment is?
Correct. And that each school district that joins this lawsuit, um, would get a portion. So there recently was a jewel lawsuit, um, and, and school districts did, um, it wasn't significant, um, but I do think it was between like twenty and sixty thousand for some districts that they did receive.
Have, have they done, and I know for friends as part of this, I've got to have the law firm, but have they done evaluation? Do they know? All the, 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 how to quantify all the bullet points there?
If they do, they did not share that in the information that they provide. Cause one of the things that will, once we make the determination, um, and we have to make a decision by February twenty-ninth, so that's why I prepared on the, um, agenda tonight. We will have to provide information on the number of referrals that, uh, have been impacted by this.
Do you have all that data?
Yep.
Do you have to provide all of that by the twenty-ninth or just the response?
Just, just the resolution that we're moving forward.
All right, so that's how they're gonna quantify.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, so the jewel lawsuit yielded nationwide about four hundred and sixty-six million dollars. Of the BOSsies representatives, three point six million of a hundred and forty-three districts. So.
Right.
It depended on your size as to monetary amount that you got.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and then just wanted to circle back to our twenty-twenty-four capital improvement project. So we do have staff meetings scheduled this week. They are tomorrow, Wednesday, and Thursday, they are after school. Um, campus and SEI will be present to meet with the staff. Really, this is our needs analysis, it's our focus to really find out what the staff, um, feels that was missed or needed in, in the current plans. And then we will have community meetings to be determined at, at a later time. We'll get those dates from SEI tomorrow, so we can get that out to people plenty of notice. And then, um, just wanted to talk about the current capital project. We are at the end of the project, and so that's the time when we spend on our contingency budget. And really, the only things that we spent that money down on was, was needed. So our big chiller, which is our air conditioner and the pit pumps, all connected to the chiller, they needed to be rebuilt, that was completed in August. Um, the reason that's important is that our windows don't open in our school district. And last year, at the end of the school year, the chiller was going down on a regular basis. And we would be in danger of having to close if our certain, um, temperatures got to a certain point and we couldn't cool our building. So that, that certainly wasn't a necessity. Um, our elevator is currently being rebuilt, that also was failing on a regular basis. It's anticipated that will be completed by next Friday. Our field of dream access, um, and many of you know that anybody who needed to access our field of dreams, who was in a wheelchair or maybe just, um, walking down a steep hill was not something that was easy. We also are in the process of moving forward with a bridge concept, which I do have pictures of. So this is an aerial view, and what you'll see is the green stripes are the existing bleachers. The blue stripes would be additional bleachers. And then the red rectangle on top, that's where, that's a walking concourse as well as where the handicapped, um, accessible people would sit, and there is a seat next to them. And then you see, um, the red rectangle going back to the press box, that would be a bridge. You see it in this angle, so it's a flat bridge. Um, it's high enough that even if people are standing in that last bleacher, that someone in a wheelchair would be able to see over them. So that is anticipated to be, um, completed by July. So will, um, give us additional seating, but also a much safer means for all people to access, um, the field of dreams, and they will access that, that this bridge is on the left side of the press box. So you're not walking all the way past the press box, down the driveway, and then back to the bleachers. So shortening that walk significantly to, for people who, who stroll. Um, we still will have the gator running for anyone who does want to go down and, and access the bleachers at a, a different angle. But we felt that this was indeed for access to our field of dreams.
And there's ban accessible parking out back, right?
Yeah, so what has also been, thank you, what has also been a major barrier is that while, um, the capital improvement project was going on, that entire back parking lot was a construction area. There will be, um, parking back there for anybody who needs it. Um, and then you know that we added a local capital improvement project, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, um, our annual budget. And one of the things that we have determined is you can see the holes in the track, which cause a hazard for our students running. We do need to repair our track, we have some sinkholes, um, from some pipes that are broken, and they will not fix themselves, they'll just continue to arose, we need to, um, fix that. And then we need to, um, do ten thousand dollars work inside the building. So we, there is a, a current spot that is a storage unit for Aaron that, um, does not, the heater in it is not working. And, um, the things that he has in there being stored, it does require to not drop below freezing, so we need a heater in there. And then we need domestic water valves added in the elementary office. We were doing some work, and he went to shut off the water and found that there were no domestic shut-off water valves. So a critical component to, to move forward with that.
Well, has the track been there?
So the track is, uh, was it two thousand twelve?
Well.
Mm-hmm. They, they reached their maximum life between twelve and fifteen years. Um, the plan would be to, um, power wash this. We would repair those holes, they would recaulk it, they would repaint it, re-stripe it, and it would be good for another four to five years. Then you could look towards replacing, um, refinishing, resurfacing, not replacing, resurfacing. However I say that, the current bolt we had for research in the track was two hundred and eighty thousand. So it'd be something you wanna be planful about in the next four or five years, um, to take care of.
Yeah.
My plan is to fix the current areas, though, that are on there before the track season. So the areas, some of those potholes, like, I found potholes, but they'll be filled in, uh, prior to track season, and then after track season, it's, but more the, you know.
So the difference in cost of resurfacing versus doing a whole new track was?
Fifty thousand. So it's fifty thousand dollars to power wash it, caulk it, spray it, and strip it.
Right, but so like resurfacing, is that, is that akin to replacing the whole track like from scratch, like down to the base level?
So my understanding is the quality of the track right now, we would be able to resurface it. So yes, it would bring it back to that twelve to fifteen years, is that your understanding, Craig? Not this, this, what we're current, the fifty thousand would do four to five years.
Right.
But the resurfacing would bring it back to the twelve to fifteen years.
When you resurface it, which is like two hundred and eighty thousand, that's gonna be to bring it back, so it's good for a hundred, ten to twelve years.
How long would that take?
Uh, you can.
If it were, if we were to do it, how long would that take?
Uh, it's weather-dependent, but probably a month or so, a month or two. Cause it has good asphalt under it, you know what I mean, like?
That's.
It was done right when they did it, so that the bottom layer is good.
Okay.
It's really.
The base layer is fine, it's just the top layer.
Okay.
Wait, can he just say that again?
It was done right?
It was done right?
Well. The bottom, the back.
Well. It was done right for the number of lanes.
Successes.
There's a solid foundation to it.
Correct.
I hope, you never know until you dig.
Yeah.
So that would be the, the cost of, of replacing the six lanes that we currently have. Cause I know at one point we were trying to do an eight-lane.
That, that's, who asked to say, is it wide enough?
Well. No.
So.
Do eight lanes, you'd have to do a lot of them.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be.
Reestablish the field.
Well, you'd have to.
Or go on.
Go on the, yeah, yeah, you're talking about significant construction.
Different angles.
Um, we also just received our fiscal stress score. So every year, we, um, get both a fiscal stress score and an environmental stress score. You can see that an environmental stress score is a consistent, um, and our fiscal stress score has increased a little bit. When you look at the two areas, um, it really is about cash, cash position. So that is why it has increased our, our score. Anything below twenty-four point nine, you're considered, uh, no designation on your fiscal stress. On your environmental, anything below a twenty-nine point nine, you're considered to not have a designation. Um, two factors that have, in, you know, contributed to our environmental stress, um, is the turnover rate of, of all of our teachers and the percent of English language learners. And so that certainly doesn't mean that, um, having English language learners is a bad thing. What it does say is that, that those are then mandated services that will then impact your budget. Um, hopefully, we will see the environmental stress score go down. Um, in the fact that, you know, we really did the right thing last year with our teacher contract. And so hopefully, we will see, um, teachers staying here instead of leaving the district. And then, um, on Saturday, I head to Albany for the New York State Council of School Superintendent's Conference. One of the things that they have brought back, this is, um, since COVID, is our in-person advocacy. So we will be meeting, um, with State Senator Pam Helmin and Assemblywoman Marjorie Burns to advocate for, um, fair budget, um, really asking them to review the foundation aid formula. Um, and the other major component is pushing back the timeline on the electric bus, um, implementation plan. So that's where I'll be next weekend. Upcoming events, we've got lots of things going on. March is a busy time, and it's hard to believe it's here already. Um, we certainly have our all-county, our middle school page turners, out of state of mind. Um, spring sports begin, that just seems shocking. And then our, um, musical, which is why Gianna wasn't here for her student update, Once Upon a Mattress. And I'm sure it'll be wonderful as always. And with that, any questions?
No.
Very good.
Nobody? Nope, okay. What about finance?
Uh, we met tonight, um, Mike filled in for, uh, Craig. Um, more on budget, um, I would say we're getting closer. Um, Scott has worked hard on it, uh, Bruce Capron is, is giving him a hand. Uh, Bruce was the legendary business administrator, Honeywell Falls Lima. And, uh, uh, they gave us a great, uh, lesson on expense-driven aid, uh, capital aid, transportation aid. You spend X and you get X back. And that's that number three revenue item that Scott mentioned, uh, where our money comes in. Uh, it was great instruction, thank you for that. I think we'll know more, uh, at the next meeting. We're, uh, we're, we're, we're getting closer, and, uh, Scott's worked hard on it, and, um, we're getting there. Thank you, what did I miss?
I think you covered it, I, from, there's a lot to be done in the next three-plus weeks to, to determine how we ultimately solve the financial headwinds. But, uh, I think we've got some good, good team working on it, so. That said, uh, you know, tossed a lot around a lot of numbers, more to follow. Thanks.
Thank you.
Kevin, any updates on policy?
I sat in for you in one meeting.
Yeah, you sat in on the last meeting for me and stuff. I'm not sure I'll be invited back, but I sat in for you. I think I missed you. No, I, I think, uh, I was really just sitting in for you, and there's a lot of, of policies that, uh, you all are looking at. Kind of substituting state-driven policies for local policies. And part of that discussion, we got into a fair amount relative to policies lead to working procedures, and procedures work to, uh, have, you know, lower-level work instructions associated with it in terms of how to carry things out. So I know, uh, the, the admin team's working on a lot of that.
Yeah, just going through, um, it's a long project to go through, all of the state policies, and figure out what's redundant, what's, what we, what works for us so that we can pair out, um, and then exactly switch to procedure. What's more appropriate in procedures so we have less repetition within policy. Still in the process.
Appreciate you saying. I think they'll be looking forward to you coming back.
That sounds kind of rough.
Um, they did have a meeting, um, I know the, the, the big thing that they decided on, it was the, the day that we also had our, um, tenure meeting to review untenured staff, um, was really to pass the torch, if you will, of, um, the basketball being the community hardwood classic to the whale watch. So I believe, is it March twenty-second, that the hardwood classic, um, will take place, so. He's laying on attending.
All right, great.
Ready?
Yeah.
Ready for personnel? Okay. I'd like to make a motion, we approve, uh, personnel items eight point zero two to eight point zero nine.
Any, any questions on the personnel appointments? Permanent appointments, the MOA? For Danielle, thank you, Danielle.
Thank you, Danielle, absolutely.
Thank you. Any, any questions? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So. Um, under new business, I'd like to make a motion, we approve items nine point zero two through nine point one one.
Second? Any questions?
Both the board members, the.
So, yeah, I was just trying to find which one the, we're, there's three of them there. So there are three board members being nominated, at least for the, uh, BOSsies, and I was getting messages, but, uh, knows, but anyhow, there's three, three individuals, um, Dr. Woodruff.
Fifty other just.
Yeah.
Uh, and Laminston, and there was.
Two of them were, I think we, yeah. Yeah, one, one was new, yeah.
Marjorie Foster.
Any questions on any of those? Those would be the only three, or?
Yeah, there was. Yep.
All right, so hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? But we'll.
Last, under business office, I'd like to make a motion, we approve items ten point zero two through ten point zero five.
Doctor? Any questions on these? From my perspective, I see a lot of transfers in ten point oh two. I was a little cautious in terms of what those transfers were being done for. So I guess from the finance committee, we didn't talk about it tonight, but I was just curious, and.
We talked about it, but we asked.
Okay. All right. Okay, in that regard, I.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just, it's kind of general, um, ebb and flow of incoming, outgoing, yeah, so it was just moving money to satisfy.
Okay. Any other questions on business office? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Any opposed? Hey, so move.
You know, exactly, essentially.
We've already done eleven, so I guess we're going to, well, just came to eleven point oh one, we've already talked about it. That's the social media.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Unless we need a motion to a tool that.
Okay, I'll, I'll make an motion to approve item eleven point zero two.
Yes. Second? Alright, so we've already talked about it, so.
May I ask that we just be, the board be included in on the response given the tight deadline?
All in favor? Any opposed? So moved? And no items for executive session? So, okay.
Well, then, I'll make a motion. Will you adjourn?
Second? Thank you, everybody.
I'm the, I'm destroying keyboards left and right, huh?